Notice requirements required for the open public hearing law has been satisfied. Notice is properly given, said notice having to be transmitted to the Courier-News and Star Ledger on Wednesday, January 9th, 2019, as well as posting on the Republican Board of the Clerk's office. Roll call please.
Councilmembers Armani, here. Councilwoman Davis.
Present.
Councilman Good.
Present.
Councilman McCray.
Present.
Councilman Storch.
Here.
Vice President Hockaday.
Here.
And Council President Millsransy.
Present.
Madam President, we have all members present in the form.
Please rise and pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Humbly we ask God to give her peace and love her charity, to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will, and to grant the life and spirit on all those who work for justice and peace. Amen.
I have a motion to approve the notice for the regular meeting of July 8th, 2019. Do they have a second?
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any stand? Communications from the mayor, we have none. Unfinished business, we have none. So we now, consideration of public hearing, second reading and final passage, MC 2019-20. Mr. Clerk, please read MC 2019-20 by title and further certify that the ordinance has completed with all statutory publication requirements.
MC 2019 dash 20 is an ordinance to amend Chapter 16, Vehicles and Traffic, Article 10, Bus Stop, Section 1, Schedule 12, Part 2, Paragraph 3A, is hereby certified that notice of the public hearing on this order is published in the Courier-News on July 19th, 2019.
Okay, floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak on this ordinance. May I have a motion to close the public hearing on this ordinance?
So be it.
Roll call please. Oh, may I have a motion to speak, to adopt this ordinance? Um, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, closer. May I have a motion to adopt this ordinance, a second reading and final passage, and if adopted, the ordinance shall be published as required by the law. Roll call.
Councilmembers Armani?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Good?
Yes.
Councilman McCray?
Yes.
Councilman Storch?
Yes.
Vice President Hockaday?
Yes.
Council President Millsransy?
Yes.
That is unanimous, this ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
A total of thirty minutes has been allocated for public comments, limited to resolutions and ordinances being considered this evening. If you wish to be heard, please give your name and address to the clerk for the record. Each speaker will be given three minutes. The floor is now open.
Timothy Priano, 1405 Martin Avenue. One question I have before I start. I can ask even on the second, the first reading things, or should I wait till the end?
The first reading, is it introductions or should I, at the same time? Is this one? Resolutions and ordinances being considered this evening.
First one I'm calling upon is R. 254-19. I'm confused by why we're going to be given a severance package. We were told that Carlos resigned. Why are we offering a package unless we're being fed a different story? Again, we see that we are on our third administrator. What type of management skills are involved? Was Ricky Carlos dismissed because they did not toe the line? This is not a personnel issue, this is about transparent government. My other issue I have tonight is in regards to the MC 2019 dash 22, in reference to the New Art Center. Pricing at the New Art Center, a year ago, as chairman of the Decray School of Art, I was told that we were overcharging our community for our rentals at our event. This is crazy that the amount of money we've spent so far on fixing this building up, that the fees are so obscene for people in the community to use it. I looked at the prices and this is so, this is almost triple what Decray charges, and we're a nonprofit that has to survive. This is the city-run building, and we're charging our residents so much money to rent the space. And I think it's disgusting that we should be looking at prices to include the neighbors and the people in the city to be in one place, instead of trying to chase them away and take money from the residents who are already paying way too much in taxes. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no one else on the floor, may I have a motion to close public hearing?
So be it.
Second?
Seconded.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Clerk, will you please offer the resolutions?
Yes, Madam President. Resolution R. 250-19 is granting the advice and consent to the appointment of Wayne R. Clark as president chair of the City of Plainfield.
Are there any questions? Do we have a motion?
Move.
Second.
All of us. Roll call. You have a motion.
Okay, Councilmembers Armani?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
No.
Councilman Good?
Yes.
Councilman McCray?
Yes.
Councilman Storch?
Yes.
Vice President Hockaday?
Yes.
Council President Millsransy?
Yes.
Six in favor want to oppose this resolution that's been adopted. Now come the resolution, R. 251-19 is granting the advice and consent to the appointment of Kent Childress to serve as the fire director of the City of Plainfield.
Do we have a motion?
Moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Armani?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Storch?
Yes.
Hockaday?
Yes.
Vice President, Council President Millsransy?
Yes.
R. 251-19 has been adopted.
City of Plainfield.
Do we have a motion?
Moved.
Seconded.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmembers Armani?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Storch?
Yes.
Vice President Hockaday?
Yes.
Council President Millsransy?
Yes.
Resolution's been approved. Resolution R. 253-19 is authorizing settlement in the matter of Yezmin Damon versus the City of Plainfield.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Armani?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Storch?
Yes.
Vice President Hockaday?
Yes.
Council President Millsransy?
Yes.
Resolution's been adopted. Resolution R. 254-19 is authorizing a severance pay to Carlos Sanchez, former business administrator of City of Plainfield.
Do we have a motion?
So be it. Seconded.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Armani?
Yes.
Davis?
No.
Good?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Storch?
Yes.
Vice President Hockaday?
Yes.
Council President Millsransy?
Yes.
Six in favor want to oppose this resolution that's been adopted. Resolution R. 255-19 is authorizing refunds of overbuilt taxes.
Motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any stand?
Resolution R. 256-19 authorizing adjustments to several tax accounts.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Question?
Okay, Councilwoman Davis?
What's the impact on services and taxes because of this loss of revenue?
There's no impact on services. The hit here to the city is $267,267.73 that won't be collected.
So is there a plan to either reduce spending or make up that revenue in another way?
The intent would be to find other sources of revenue, as opposed to reductions in expenses.
Do we have a plan in place to find other sources of revenue?
Every day. Yes, there is definitely a plan in place to find additional sources of revenue.
Can you provide some examples?
One would be the fact, the most recent bond sale, our interest payments are going to be lower going forward. So those are the kinds of things you do to generate more money. We also have more inspections that are taking place, so that you get more permits, more tickets. Those are the kinds of things that we have direct control of, and we would hope that they result in additional revenue sources.
Thank you.
Just a point of information, the two largest adjustments were $25,000 and change and $11,600. Can someone identify the property owners or the properties? I can send it to council tomorrow morning. I did not bring that information with me. That'd be fine. I mean, it doesn't affect my vote. We have, we have to approve this. So, yeah, I'd like to know.
Okay. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any stand?
Resolution R. 257-19 authorizing approval to cancel the 2019-2020 taxes due to a disabled veteran exemption.
Are there any questions?
Question here. So, I certainly think it's commendable to assist our nation's finest, especially those who are disabled. Just wondering, is this a pattern in terms of us canceling taxes for individuals of this status? Is this something we do regularly?
There's actually a state statute that authorizes that if you are a disabled veteran, and you can prove that, that you are entitled to this exemption.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
So be it. Seconded.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions?
Resolution R. 258-19 granting approval to the appointment of Lieutenant Tahi Wazim as the fire official for the City of Plainfield.
Are there any questions? Do we have a motion?
So be it.
Second.
Okay, may I have a roll call?
Councilmembers Armani?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Storch?
Yes.
Vice President Hockaday?
Yes.
Council President Millsransy?
Yes.
That is unanimous, this resolution has been adopted. Resolution R. 259-19 authorizing the submission and acceptance of a grant from the New Jersey Department of Transportation.
Are there any questions? May I have a motion?
So be it.
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions?
Resolution R. 260-19 authorizing approval for a street opening at 11:40 Hillside Avenue.
Are there any questions? May I have a motion? Second?
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any outstanding?
Resolution 261-19 authorizing approval for a street opening at 3:21-23. Make doubt.
Are there any questions? Do we have a motion?
Second.
Okay, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any standing?
Resolution R. 262-19 authorizing submission and acceptance of a grant from the New Jersey Department of Transportation for pedestrian crosswalk and sidewalk replacement.
Are there any questions? Do we have a motion?
So be it.
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any standing?
Resolution 263-19 authorizing the submission and acceptance of a grant from the New Jersey Department of Transportation for improvements at the Plainfield train station.
Are there any questions? Do we have a motion?
Moved.
Seconded.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any standing?
Council President, the administration would respectfully ask that resolutions 264-19 and 265-19 be tabled at this time?
Okay.
Council President, we'll need a motion today.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Okay. Let's just do table, let's do a roll call.
Roll call to table resolutions 264 and 265. Councilmembers Armani?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Storch?
Yes.
Vice President Hockaday?
Yes.
Council President Millsransy?
Yes.
Unanimous, these resolutions have been tabled. Resolution R. 266-19 authorizing lien placement to property owner.
Are there any questions? Do we have, do we have a motion?
Moved.
Second?
Seconded.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions?
Resolution R. 267-19 authorizing the execution of a meals-on-wheels donor agreement.
Are there any questions?
Yes.
Yes.
Is this program already happening right now?
Correct, yes it is.
So the senior center is delivering meals to homebound seniors right now?
Yes.
I think that's a great program.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions?
Resolution R. 268-19 is authorizing the planning board to conduct a second reexamination of the TOD and North Avenue redevelopment plan.
Are there any questions?
Yes.
Okay. How come the flood plain wasn't a part of the first study? What was the question? How come the portion of the flood plain wasn't addressed in the first study?
In the first examination, we did look at DEP requirements to elevate the properties as part of the flood plain, and so properties in the flood plain, on North Avenue in particular, were getting a greater demand for residential or light industrial properties, and we'd like to accommodate that. That's the second relook.
What is that area currently zoned for?
The area is currently under the current redevelopment plan. It allows for mixed use, predominantly some commercial, but it was planned to transition to mixed-use development.
Any other questions?
Just a comment. I'm concerned about the direction this is going, and I understand that it's driven by external forces, you know, the immovable force of DEP. But this does go to the planning board and it comes back to the council, but I do think when it comes back, I urge my colleagues to look closely at what the new proposal is and to make sure that we don't go too far in doing mostly or almost entirely residential.
Any other questions or comments? Do we have a roll call?
Any motion?
I have a motion, I didn't ask.
So be it.
Second?
Second.
Okay, yeah.
Councilmembers Armani?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Storch?
Yes.
Vice President Hockaday?
Yes.
Council President Millsransy?
Yes.
This resolution's been adopted. Resolution R. 269-19 is rescinding and replacing Resolution 76-19 and Resolution 126-19 authorizing the planning board to investigate non-condemnation redevelopment areas.
Questions?
I'd like the administration to just explain what's happening with 269 and 270, because they are connected. Yes, Councilman, they are connected. Council approved us to have the planning board look at TODD South several months ago. It was over 120 properties that were part of that investigation, and what we're doing here is we're proposing that you separate non-condemnation properties from condemnation properties. So there are some properties that we would like to have, Council have the authority to condemn if necessary, to facilitate development of smaller parcels into larger development areas. And so, again, the statute requires that when someone is part of, a property owner is part of a condemnation study, that we notice them, that we identify it that way. So you see about a third of the properties are part of the proposed condemnation area. Attached to both resolutions were a map, and as part of that, that was Exhibit A. For the condemnation area, clearly, these are the properties that are closest, for the most part, to the train station, to the Plainfield downtown train station. So again, we want to facilitate development downtown. It may require the use of condemnation on the part of Council to help a developer or someone assemble these parcels. Yeah, thank you. And I see that the YMCA building is part of the condemnation study area, so I'm assuming that means that we think that's going to be a hard property to develop, which I'm kind of assuming that, but I'd just like to get your thoughts on it. My thoughts are the following. My history in knowing the purchaser of the YMCA property, that person is known to me to flip properties. And so, yes, I think we do need to have as part of the toolkit the ability to condemn.
Do you have a question?
I have another question. So what happens to the residents who live in one of these buildings or one of these parcels that we decide to condemn?
Under the local housing redevelopment statute, it doesn't necessarily mean that we're developing, that we're demolishing a property, but any time that we displace a resident, the developer is obligated to relocate that residence.
So do we have a vision for this area of what we'd like to see?
Yes, we'd like to see in this area around the train station, mixed use, and we'd like to see increased density that we are part of, we apply to be a transit village destination. With that destination comes the commitment to increase the density around the train station.
Do we have a number to what we want to increase that density to?
We have recently in some redevelopment plans, gone as high as 10 stories downtown. This TODD South, at this point, is only a study, and the redevelopment plan will recommend densities once that comes before you. And so at this time, I don't know what that density is, but it will recommend height densities for these parcels as part of the plan.
So when we talk about increasing densities, we're talking about increasing like units, apartment units?
Yes.
So we don't really know how many people really comes with increasing that density?
Well, we recently did a project, a block, a redevelopment plan, TODD West, and with that density of 10 stories, comes approximately 500 units of housing, of residential housing. So once we define the density, we can define the number of units.
So with the number of units, so I think my question is, do we know about how many people will come with each unit?
I can get you the data. Rutgers does a study every year. The number of bedrooms typically determine the number of people in a unit. So if you have a studio or one-bedroom unit, that's generally one person. Two bedrooms, it's a little more, it's like one point something on average, but I could provide you this Rutgers study information later. They do a transit-oriented development study. They update it every year on what the actual number of people that come into these types of units, because it's always debated. It's when you get into three bedrooms that you tend to have more people and children.
Council President, if I may.
This is the kind of work that will be done by the planning board if the governing body decides to adopt this resolution this evening. They will look at all the statutory criteria, determine whether or not this is to be declared a condemnation area of redevelopment. So many of the questions are good ones, but they're ones that the planning board will take up as part of its review.
Director, one question. So in terms of the YMCA, you said that you knew the individual or individuals working on the project. As of now, do you know of, you know, what they could potentially use the site for?
Councilman, I don't want to cut you off, but unfortunately, I think that's something that would have to be negotiated later time. I don't know if it's appropriate for me, especially when we haven't even adopted the area, need redevelopment as condemnation or non-condemnation. So I think it's a question that I would respectfully ask that we take up at another time.
Any other questions?
I have all a question. So, I know you spoke to the YMCA property, but why do we want to condemn this area instead of non-condemnation? Like, what's the benefits?
Once again, though, I just want to stress to Council, this is not an action to condemn. This is merely an action for, to ask for the study of the planning board to determine whether this meets the statutory criteria for an area need of redevelopment as a condemnation area. So we can't say at this point whether it even meets that criteria without the planning board doing its due diligence.
So I think that's, what you said is true, but I think it's a fair question, so hypothetically, I think we should get an answer.
Okay. Condemnation is.
I don't think it's appropriate for us to attempt to prejudice the study, and I think that it would be inappropriate for us to reach those conclusions. We will be substituting ourselves, our judgment for that of the planning board when the study is undertaken.
I don't, I don't think I'm going to say anything to prejudice the study, but in redevelopment circles, condemnation is used sparingly, but it's used when it's believed that property owners will not collaborate in the redevelopment of the area. So this, that gives the city or whatever government entity the power to do it, is what the entity thinks is right, if the property owners are just going to, for example, just sit on a property and not take care of it.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, do you have another motion?
So be it.
Second?
Seconded.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmembers Armani?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Storch?
Yes.
Vice President Hockaday?
Yes.
Council President Millsransy?
Yes.
That is unanimous, this resolution's been adopted. Resolution 270-19 rescinding and replacing Resolution 76-19 and 126-19 authorizing the planning board to investigate a combination redevelopment area.
Are there any questions? Do we have a motion?
So be it.
Second? All of us in favor?
Aye.
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 Resolution R two seventy one nineteen is amending R forty one nineteen and authorizing the application and acceptance of a grant from the New Jersey Economic Development Authority.
Are there any questions? Do we have a motion?
Moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are, we now come to ordinances on first reading. Mr. Clerk, will you please read ordinance MC two zero one nine twenty-two?
MC twenty-nine twenty-two is an ordinance establishing Chapter Nine licenses, permits, and regulated activities, Article twenty-three Plainfield Arts, Culture, and Arts Center, and establishing a fee schedule under municipal code of City of Plainfield, New Jersey, nineteen seventy-one.
Are there any questions from the council?
Yes. Will people be able to request fee waivers for this?
Yes.
Will it go through the same process that it goes through for like the sports fields and everything, where we require a recommendation from the business administrator?
So currently, it would go through, the art center would follow, the CDS already established, so I'll say yes to that.
Thank you.
Now, it's kind of funny because we have an ordinance still under those waivers, but I'll leave it alone. Okay. Are there any other questions from the council? I will now entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance on first reading.
So be it.
There's a second?
Second.
Okay. Clerk, may I have a roll call?
Councilmembers Armadi?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Storch?
Yes.
Vice President Hockaday?
Yes.
Council President Millsranson?
Yes.
This ordinance has been adopted on first reading. Now come to ordinance MC twenty-nine twenty-three is an ordinance to amend Chapter Six, Building Article Two Property Maintenance, amending registration requirements, levying a registration fee on owners, creditors of reg- regenerative properties.
Are there any questions from the council?
Yes, I mean, I think it's, what we're doing is commendable. I just think it would be helpful to just review what the, what the new item, what the new provisions are.
Sure, thank you, council. The primary and the simplest one is that it's about redirecting and restructuring information. So currently, if you have any questions, it's to the director of inspections, where it should go to the director of community development. And also, the ultimate reporting should be Department of Health and Social Services, whereas right now it's under DPDW.
I thought we were adding like a class of property owners that would be under this, under this ordinance.
So one of the things that we're doing is we're changing the scope of this ordinance. Right now, it's kind of restricted where we only have a certain body of individuals we can go after. Right now, by expanding, we create a group of individuals that we can use our municipal powers to hold accountable for their properties. So currently, we don't include properties that are in the process of foreclosure. We don't include all people and all individuals and all institutions that have some connection to property. We kind of are restricted in that. So this allows us to expand who we can reach out to when we have properties that are under stress and hold them accountable. And this is one of the most important powers that this ordinance, the amendment to it, it really is just amending that piece of it.
Thank you. That's what I wanted everybody to hear, because I think that's a really good move on the part of the city.
Any other questions or comments for the council? Okay, I will now entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance on first reading.
Moved.
Second.
Clerk, may I have a roll call?
Councilmember Armadi?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Storch?
Yes.
Vice President Hockaday?
Yes.
Council President Millsranson?
Yes.
That is unanimous. This ordinance has been adopted on first reading. Now come to MC twenty-nine twenty-four. It's an ordinance to amend Chapter Nine licenses, permits, and regulated activities, amending Article twenty-one film permit required.
Are there any questions from the council?
Yes. How will we enforce this ordinance?
So the enforcement comes between when we are looking at larger filming, and that is really what our target is, is amendment to the ordinance. Well, just to take a step back, we've been working with the New Jersey Film Commission. And what New Jersey has done is they've made New York's, I mean, New Jersey a much more open state to bring in filming because of our proximity to New York City. So they've created tax credits and tax credits for purchases and tax credit for film. What that will now allow us to do is create an environment where individuals can come in and film in our city. We have always monitored those people who come through with permits, and that's what we continue to do it. But that is the history of why we really want to do this, to be current and to be connected to what the state is doing.
Okay. Have we had a problem of people not getting permits with like larger film projects?
No, this is really about making Plainfield a better place to film. It's not so much what's not been happening, it's what we want to happen in Plainfield.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
What are the numbers of people that have come to film the area in our city?
So we have a very robust independent film. I got a society group going on in Plainfield, but we really want to encourage the larger films, from the larger companies. So I can't give you a number, but I'll look into getting back to you on that one. But I can attest to the fact that we do have a lot of independent film going on in Plainfield. And we do have film festivals coming up in...
Any other questions? Okay, I will now entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance on first reading.
Moved.
There's a second? Clerk, may I have a roll call?
Roll call on MC twenty-nine nineteen twenty-four. Councilmembers Armadi?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Storch?
Yes.
Vice President Hockaday?
Yes.
Council President Millsranson?
Yes.
That is unanimous. This ordinance has been adopted on first reading. A public hearing on these ordinances will take place at the next regular meeting of the Plainfield City Council on Monday, September ninth, twenty nineteen.
A total of sixty minutes has been allocated for all public comments to be presented. If you wish to be heard, please give your name and address to the clerk for the record. The amount of time any single speaker is allowed will be limited to five minutes. The floor is now open.
John E. Pritchard, formerly of Seven Two Three Orange Town in Plainfield, now four one zero Bruce out in the Garwood. I've just recently learned that the Antifa activists had attacked some of our military personnel, namely Marine Corps Reservists in Philadelphia. I thought we were through with that kind of anti-GI hatred. It's time we backed up our military personnel. Our soldiers, sailors, Marines, Coast Guardsmen, and airmen, some of whom are from Plainfield, as they defend our country wherever they're serving, both at home and abroad. We failed to do that during the war in Vietnam. We lost sixteen men from Plainfield during that time. And those who came back, they were called Nazis, murderers, baby killers. I'd like to see that word Nazi retired once and for all. The poor brave soldier and are despised, nor count them as a stranger. Remember whose country stay and day in our danger. Also, our police officers and firefighters are doing their utmost to protect us. They're out there twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, as evidenced by the alarm they received while they were here. They had to respond. We have to back them up too. And lastly, we need to reactivate Meulandberg Hospital. That's, this is a national security issue. What if another nine eleven attack occurs? We'll need that hospital badly, and we need, we need it soon. And I'm not talking about head colds or earaches, I'm talking about many people's lives. The sooner we activate Meulandberg, the better off we're all gonna be. Thirty percent clear!
Ten to fifteen, fourteen oh five, Martinia. Couple things. We, eighteen months ago, we had a safe streets grant to paint the sidewalk, or the crosswalks. And school's about to start, and it's still, the sidewalk, the crosswalks aren't taken care of yet, especially by the high school, especially by Maxim, by the elementary schools near Cedar Brook, because that's my drive every morning. But I don't understand why we haven't had our streets, crosswalks done. Downtown, even on the corner of Second and Front, or Second and Park, they took up the crosswalk, but they haven't replaced it yet for a crossing line. So you don't know where to stop, and it is New Jersey law that you stop in the crosswalk for someone's in the crosswalk, but there's no crosswalks to stop it. Secondly, do we have cameras at the city pumps where our gas clean is being pumped? Because a couple residents have sent me messages that they've been noticing past private cars going up at the station also. So that's something we should be monitoring, that people aren't just taking advantage of the gas pumps out there. Third is the grass clippings. Our drains on our street are getting filled up very fast because people are dropping the habit of putting their grass clippings in brown paper bags again, and they're putting them right in the curb. So what happens with grass clippings when it rains, and we're gonna have a huge rain tomorrow, it's all gonna blow into our sewers or our basins. And then what causes that flooding and everything else? And I spoke to John Luis about when they can get these done, but it's, we all know in different neighborhoods how bad it gets when it rains because the sewers are all backed up. And then I don't understand why the private landscapers are keeping their trash on the street. Is it not their job to take the stuff to a dump instead of leaving it for RDPW to pick up after them? And finally, the website is still not up to date. We still don't have current information. We're still looking at things from two thousand and thirteen, fourteen. And it's, to try and find something on the website, you have to dig through for a half hour trying to find the source of it. And I had somebody from the city walk me through it, and even they got confused where to find it. Thank you.
Ray, right on time, Dan Dunn, ten ninety-five, Kenyon Avenue, getting your mayor, council, lovely people. Just, I'm not wanting to complain, but I have a concern. About three weeks ago, I was coming east on West Fourth Street. I'm known to patrol all the town, you know, I move very slowly, I'm older, and I know a lot of people, a lot of past people, they wave to me, I slow down and I speak to them. This is a Sunday evening, about six o'clock. I'm coming up Fourth Street to go and visit the Jones family. There's a young lady, it's a parakeet that sits on the step all day. And I was getting ready to go and spend a little time when I get a chance. And I had to sort of swing out in the street a little bit because there are hedges in the yard that prevents your vision from being perceived directly in front of you. So I swung out a little bit, and I might have crossed the double line, but Fourth Street is not, it's so wide. And I swung out, and I looked, and no one was there. So I proceeded about another two hundred, maybe a hundred fifty, maybe fifty yards to the corner. Immediate, I made an immediate right, to go to John Street all the way home, caught the Seventh Street. Soon as I turned the corner, lights flashes, bing, 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 bing. I said, what the hell's going on? So I pull over, the young lady gets out the car. I have to say, I came to the police department after she gave me this summons. All right, she was a very professional, showed a lot of apathy. She was what we really need here to confront these young people in the condition that they are, you know, psychologically, I mean, a police officer got to wonder whether or not they're gonna see the, go and see the family at night. That's how serious these kids are, whack. She goes to the car wrong, she could get shot or anything. So I can understand her being nervous, very cautious, but very professionally, she addressed me. And I attempted to tell her who I was and to show her a book, the project community that was issued a couple months ago, where I committed to Plainfield Police Department on what the job that they were doing. But before I could get a chance to show her that, I said, excuse me, sir, I'll be right back. She came back and gave me a ticket, very politely. I was shocked, but she was so well, so professional until I couldn't get an attitude. I just said, wow, I'm going to investigate this a little further. I asked her what it was for, and I don't remember exactly what she told me, didn't make sense to me. But I guess behind her being fairly new, and she wants to do the job the right way, under the tutelage of my friend, the director of car around, who we don't have no more, but hey, that was my guy. So I couldn't really, I said, Brad, let me go down here and speak to who's in charge of the tour. Went down to the police department, and the police officer asked me, could they help me? I said, yes, I'd like to know who's running the tour, who's the commander for this shift? And she said, one second. And she went in the back and came back, and a sergeant came out. Sergeant Taylor, who I knew for quite some time, so I said, I'll wait. I said, fine, I'd like to see the tour commander. He said, one moment. I said, what's the problem? He said, I got a ticket, I want to know what it's for. And I gave him a ticket. He went in the back and came back and said, Mr. Dunn, what you have to do is go to court and contest it. Okay, but I went there to tell them the level of apathy which that young woman showed me. I was so impressed with her, just the way she handled herself. I had to go down there and commend her, and the department, as well as complain about that ticket that I didn't agree with. So I went to court, and they charged me seventy dollars, I guess it was court costs, whatever it was. And I didn't say anything about it, her being brand new, and me being here with my family for fifty years, and I supported the Plainfield Police Evidence Society for several years, coming out of my pocket with serious money to make sure that we had events for the children on Thursday in the park. So I'm sort of kind of like a well-known figure here, my family, I'm the only one left, and I intend to stay involved as I have been. But I want you vote to please let the new police director, Mrs. Burgess, she's, I don't know her that well, but she knows me. Please make sure that she informs all these officers running about who I am and what I stand for, and I'm not here to hurt, I'm here to help. Thank you very much.
My name is Ray Williamson, and the reason I'm here is because I moved to Plainfield about three years ago.
Your address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, nine one six Madison Avenue, Plainfield. I moved here about three years ago from New York, and I'm involved in the film industry. And presently, I'm delivering a film to Lions Gate, I'm finishing it up. One of the reasons I came to Plainfield is because of the peace, the calmness, quiet. I wanted to get away from that race in New York and everything that was going there, so I could concentrate on my films. Now, I've gone to City Hall, and I went through the process of applying for permits. And I'm trying to figure out, because I was listening to the gentleman earlier, he was saying that he wants to attract bigger film companies to come here. And when I came to Plainfield, I had been doing all the films in New York. And when I came to Plainfield and I looked around at all the buildings, the history and the houses, everything, it's like, wow. There is a wealth of visual information here that people need to see. And the only way they're gonna see that is that somebody that lives in the city, somebody that has a passion for the city, somebody that wants to tell stories that will fit here, they're gonna do those kind of stories. Now, film that I'm working on is going to Cannes Film Festival. I go to the Air Film, Film Market, where films are actually sold. And how those big film companies are gonna see Plainfield is by... And how those big film companies are gonna see Plainfield is by the small beginning filmmakers, because what they're looking for now is they're looking for fresh blood, they're looking for new ideas. It's like they are squeezed Hollywood out, till everything is a rehash, the movies that already been made, because they want to ensure their budget, their bottom line, by saying, if it was hit already, let's redo it again. But at the same time, all of these new markets are coming up, where it's cable markets, all different Roku, there's, um, Netflix, all these different avenues that are coming up. And the ones that are gonna be effect, like, where they're gonna find the talent for that is through the filmmakers that can get out on the street and actually start making films, because it's not for everybody. It's very expensive, the equipment is expensive. Plainfield has been leveled because of digital now, because film is really expensive, but now with digital camera, anybody can get out there and make a film. But if you go to City Hall, from what I see, I'm looking at the requirements, and then you have to have a fi- five hundred dollar maintenance fee, you have to have a hundred fifty dollars for this, you have to have fifty dollars. So at the end of the day, somebody that's just starting out making film, they have to put nine hundred dollars down. And it, and it's like, anybody that's starting this out, do they have that kind of money? When I did film in New York, and I went to the mayor's office for film and television, you go there, you fill out a form, and then you tell them all of the locations that you're gonna shoot at, and then you tell them your requirements. We did a lot of films in which we had to use, um, guns, so whenever we did that, we have police officers with us, there was requirement for insurance and stuff like that. If you're dealing with people that are in the, um, in the union, they require that you have certain things. But the thing was, is that we weren't being charged for every single location that we were at. If we moved over here, this is fifty dollar fee, if we moved up there, it's a fifty dollar fee, if we move over here. So the prices build up, and in the beginning, you're lucky if you can get the equipment, because now, if you wanna purchase, if you're gonna do it as a hobby, it's one thing. If you're gonna do it as a career, there are requirements that these stations, and requirements that the studios have, and if you don't meet those requirements, they're not gonna take your film. So you have to come up to a certain level. Now, what I wanted to know from the city is like, at what level, how do you judge whether a person is a big movie company or a small movie company? Like, I have my production company, and you're looking at the whole company right here. But I've managed to go out, and every single thing I've done has been accepted. I just finished a fishing show where I was in Alaska, I was in Colorado, I was all over the United States for three months. I spent nine days in Alaska when, when the, um, salmon run came in. That show got accepted by a major network, they gave me prime time stuff. And they're looking at me, and they're looking at the work that I'm putting out, and they said, you did all this by yourself? I said, yes, because I have to. So the only thing that I'm saying is that, when you adopt a film policy in the city, like you were saying, make it possible for, how can you have trees grow if you won't let the grass grow? The small filmmakers have the thread, they have to be in a situation, is there a way that you can determine, who is a small filmmaker, who's a large?
Speaker's time has left.
Sorry, your five minutes are up, but maybe after which you could speak to Director Brown?
Okay, yeah. So I still have five minutes on the...
If I may, uh, after the minute, maybe you can speak to Director?
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I represent a large portion of Plainfield tonight, but I'm sorry that I see no representation except myself. You.
Excuse me, we need name and address first, send the, for the record, the name and address, your name and address.
My name, oh, I'm sorry.
And address.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Didn't introduce my, I'm, my name is Bernice Jones. I live at one oh nine Reed Terrace in Plainfield. I have lived at one oh nine Reed Terrace for over fifty years. So I have been a taxpayer, and I know you know why I'm here now. I've been a taxpayer for all of those years and more, because I've been a resident for more than fifty years. And I heard the gentleman say that we want this to be a better city. When I came to this city, it was one of the best cities, and now, it seems like you wanted us to be a city with no seniors. And you're succeeding. I just have to say, it breaks my heart, that I cannot keep up with the taxes. I, I don't know where I'm going from here, because I do trust in God, but I don't want to have to, to leave my home, because I can't pay the taxes that everyone else is living comfortably off of. I won't mention the comforts that you're living off of, but, and I don't begrudge you, just let me live. That's all I say, let me live. I, I was fortunate enough to live so long, and just let me live. Thank you.
Sixty-one, eleven twenty-nine, we're allowing it. I, I agree with her. I'm one of the ones that probably, I'm on that list where I had to finally send a letter and try to reduce my taxes, because I'm on a fixed income now, since I'm retired. Uh, I have two issues or questions. I recently saw in the newspaper, after the terrible events, um, in the past week, El Paso, and at Dayton, that, um, mayor signed on to a letter to ask Mitch McConnell to come back and, and do gun control, two hundred mayors to the, um, um, mayor, um, council mayors, and I'm hoping that our city did, and if our city didn't, then perhaps we would consider signing on to that letter, and if the mayor did do that, I appreciate it. My other question is, um, maybe I misheard something when I was sitting back there, about the condemnation and the non-comdenation. I believe I heard that the Y M C A is part of the condemnation, because if that's what I heard, I wanna make the council aware, that might cost us a lot of money, because that building is on the National Register. So there's gonna be a whole lot of people looking at that from outside the city of Plainfield. Thank you.
Saying no one else approached the mic, may I have a motion to close public comment?
Second.
All in favor?
Come to president.
Uh, Mayor, Matt, who?
Um, there, a couple of things, come to president, that we would like to do. One, is we would like to administer the office of office to our new business administrator. We also would like to do the same for our director of fire, but I would also like to call upon our police director to have a conversation with Mr. Piano, and see if he's willing to give you the ID, the plate numbers of those private cars that are filling up at city pumps, so that we could take the appropriate action and pursue the right course of action. So I encourage you to speak to Mr. Piano, and ask if he's willing to give you whatever evidence he has.
Thank you also, Ray.
While we're getting ready for the summary, and, uh, Director Jackson, would you like to, or you want to bid at our councilman, McCray, but to talk about Wednesday night, maybe inviting people to Wednesday?
On Wednesday, uh, August fourteenth, uh, there will be a community meeting at the Plainfield High School, and the purpose, it, it starts at six P M. Uh, Council McCray, the third ward, is having a community meeting, and we will discuss the master plan, what it is, and the approach to the master plan with the public. Uh, so I encourage you and invite you to attend. Thank you.
Okay. Now, since you're on the mic, Sarah DeJesse, all right, Restaurant Week.
Oh, okay, yes. Uh, I hope everyone has seen the advertisement for Restaurant Week. We, this is the first annual Restaurant Week, and it started last Thursday, so it's going on from August eighth through August eighteenth. Uh, it is a joint venture of the New Plainfield Sid and the city of Plainfield. So I encourage you to come out and enjoy some of the delicious food in the city of Plainfield. I certainly have started going to a number of the restaurants, and I encourage you to do that all week. My team and I are going to do lunch at a couple of different places, and we have a challenge for council, to see how many places can you get to with friends and family during Restaurant Week? So thank you, everyone. Please join us for Restaurant Week. You can go on the city's website, uh, you could also go to myplainfield.org, uh, which is the Sid website. Thank you.
I accept your challenge, I've already been defined.
So at this point, we'll call up, uh, Wayne Clark, who's gonna be sworn in as the business administrator.
I, Wayne Clark.
I, Wayne Clark.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
And justly perform. All of the duties of the office of. Business Administrator, city of Plainfield. According to the best of my ability. So help me God. I do further solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey. And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same. And to the governments established in the United States. And in this state. Under the authority of the people. So help me God.
Congratulations, Mr. VA. Okay, we'll do the signing off. At this point, we'll call up Director Childress, who's gonna be sworn in as the fire director of the city.
I, Kenneth Childress.
I, Kenneth Childress.
Do solemnly swear. That I will faithfully. Impartially. And justly perform. All of the duties of the office of. Fire director. City of Plainfield. According to the best of my ability. So help me God. I do further solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey. And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same. And to the governments established in the United States. And in this state. Under the authority of the people. So help me God.
Congratulations, Director. And now the clerk will administer the oath to Mr. Tahim Muslim. Mr. Muslim would have one up here with his hand. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Lieutenant Tahim Muslim.
I, Lieutenant Tahim Muslim.
Do solemnly swear. That I will faithfully. Impartially. And justly perform. All of the duties. A fire official. According to the best of my ability. So help me God. I do further solemnly affirm. That I will support the Constitution. Of the United States. And the Constitution. Of the state of New Jersey. And that I will bear. True faith. And allegiance to the same. And to the governments established. In the United States. And in this state. Under the authority of the people. So help me God. Congratulations.
Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.